Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Om Kyaana Timirandasya Nyananjana Shalaxaya Chakshurunmietam Yeena Tasmay Sri Gurave Namaha Sri Chaitanya Manu Obishtham Stapitam Yeena Bhutale Swayam Rupa Karameyam Dadati Swapadantikam Vandeham Sri Guru Sri Utaparakamalam Sri Gurunvaishnavam Sri Rupam Sagrajatam Sahaganaruguna Tanvitam Tamse Jivam Sadvaitam Savadutam Harjanasahitam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Devam Sri Radha Krishna Padan Sahaganalika Sri Vishakanvitam Namum Vishnu Badhaya Krishna Preesthayabhutale Shrimate Bhaktivedanta Swami Niti Namine Namastey Saraswate Devay Gauravani Pracharinay Nirviseshashunyavadi Pasjatyadeesathari Namum Hava Danyaya Krishna Premaprathayate Krishnaaya Krishna Chaitanya Namni Gododushe Namaha Panchatatva Atmakam Krishnam Bhakta Rupa Swarupakam Bhakta Avataram Bhakta Kyam Namami Bhakta Shaktikam He Krishna Karuna Sindho Dina Bandho Jagatpate Rupeshakopika Kanta Radha Kanta Namostute Taptakanchana Gauranghi Rade Vrindavanishwari Rishabano Sudedevi Pranamami Hari Priy Panchakalpatarubyascha Krpa Sindhu Gevacha Patita Nam Paavani Bhyo Vaishnave Bhyo Namaha Jai Sri Krishna Chaitanya Prabhu Nittanann Shri Advaitakadada Dhar Shri Vasadi Gaurabhaktavrinda Hare Krishna Hare Krishna 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 Hare 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 Ram Hare Ram 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 Hare Hare Gurave Gaurachandraaya Radhikaya Karale Krishnaaya Krishna Bhaktaaya Kadbhaktaaya Namunamaha Mukamkaroti Vachalam Pangumlangay Deegirim Kirtripatham Sri Gurundinatharinam Paramanandamadavam Sri Krishna Chaitanya Ishvaram Harihiyum Tatsat Hare Krishna Sudhandut Pranams Thank you for joining us for this Study session we are reading Shilpa Prabhupada's book Perfect Questions Perfect Answers So we are on chapter number five which was entitled Becoming Pure How do we become pure hmm by following this method of Krishna consciousness right Shravanadi Shuddha Chitta Karaya Udaya Shravanadi by hearing and chanting the whole names of the Lord We can purify our chitta we can purify our heart Shravanadi Shuddha Chitta Karaya Udaya so Prabhupada explains here How it is not it is not something artificial that we need to get from outside But Krishna consciousness is already there in our heart and dormant state And what we are doing what we are doing by the practice of devotional service By chanting of Hare Krishna Mahamitra is reawakening our dormant propensity to serve the Supreme Personality of Godhead Reawakening our constitutional position as servant of the Supreme Personality of Godhead So let's move ahead and reading anyone wants to read So we'll have one person Prabhupada and one person Bob Okay Sheila Prabhu or you can be Bob and then I'll be Prabhupada go ahead
Hare Krishna Dandut Pranam Madhaji
Hare Krishna Dandut
Thank you so much for allowing me to ask my questions
That oh sorry we we actually completed the first section so here we were talking about how a machine Is a part of the machine is useless until it's connected to the machine and is serving the purpose of the machine Similarly what is our value we add value to our life only when we engage in the service of the Lord otherwise There is no use to to our existence that's one Prabhupada is talking about the machine part and its contribution towards the machine like that okay so Prabhu you start from here what is that
What is that Krishna is
Krishna is mine
Mine
Yes mine my Krishna
Huh
Krishna is mine Krishna is mine
Yes
And I am Krishnas that is our actual position
We are part of Krishna
Yes everything is part and parcel of Krishna because everything is generated by the energy of Krishna And everything is the energy of Krishna so Krishna tells in So that yeah so Krishna is also telling this in Bhagavad Gita right Mamevaamsho Jivaloke Jiva Bhuta Sanatana Manasasthaan Indriyani Prakriti Stani Karshati So everything is a part and parcel of Krishna everything is generated by the energy of Krishna Aham Sarvasse Prabhavo Mattha Sarvan Pravatate Itimatva Vachantema Mudavava Samnivita So Krishna is saying everything is generated by my energy and everything is is Krishna himself although we cannot equate Krishna to that but Krishna is the Source of everything yes Prabhu
Hare Krishna Shilpa Prabhupada I have one question what is the state of service minus devotion
Hmm that is not service that is business For example here in Mayapur we have employed a contractor that is not service that is business is it not Sometimes they will advertise our customers our masters is it not but in spite of the flowery language Our customers are our masters this is business because nobody is a qualified customer unless he pays But service is not like that service check in a Mahabrabhu praise to Krishna Yata Thatha Va vidadatu Lampato Matpranana Tastu Saeepana Paraha You know whatever you like but still you are my worshipful Lord that is service I don't ask any return from you that is service When you expect some return that is business
I wish to ask you to advise me on how I can come to feel closer to God I'll be leaving you soon and I am
You have to be purified
I come to the temple at times and then I leave and I'm not sure how much I take with me
It does not take much time within six months you will realize your progress but you have to follow the regulatory principles Then it will be alright just like these boys and girls are doing
Yes I see
They have no tendency for going to the cinema or going to a hotel no they have stopped all anarthas all unnecessary things
I I feel that when I go to go back that will
The whole human life is meant for purification
Yes
Tapodivyam Putrakayena Satvam Shuddhe Yasma Brahmasaukyam Tvanantam Satva means existence so if you don't purify your existence then you will have to change your body From this body to that sometimes it may be higher sometimes lower For example if you don't cure a disease it can put you into trouble in so many ways Similarly if you don't purify your existence then you will have to transmigrate from one body to another There are very subtle laws of nature now there is no guarantee that you will get a very comfortable body or an American body Therefore it is essential for the human being to purify his existence unless you purify your existence You will hanker after happiness but will always will not always be happy
When I go to my job in New York I hope I will become pure but I'm sure that I won't become as pure as your devotee here I don't I don't see myself doing that
You can do as they are doing they were not pure in the beginning but now they are pure similarly you can become pure For example in your childhood you are not educated but now you are educated
So what are the things that I may do when I go back I must
When do you go back
I'll be going back to Chaispa wait minute
Chai Bhasa
Chai Bhasa to do my work there and
What is there in Chai Bhasa
That is where I do my teaching I live there
So better not to teach because you do not know what to teach
I'll be going I don't think this teaching so much and I'll be returning to America in May but while I'm here This is my agreement for staying in India
If you are serious you can keep yourself pure anywhere it doesn't matter whether you are staying in America or India But you must know how to keep yourself purified that's all
You mean by following these principles
Yes I went to America for instance but either in America or India I am the same man
I I have somewhat somewhat tried to follow since I met you the first time Brief visit to Calcutta in November nineteen seventy one
Hmm but follow you must strictly follow if you are serious
Maybe okay maybe when I saw now is well the most foolish and I have said but let me tell you how I feel
No no not foolish I don't say foolish but imperfect
Okay imperfect but let me let me tell you I feel that right now I admire and respect your devotees But I don't feel as if I am a part of them or even that I have a great desire to part of them I feel that I just want I want to do what is right come closer to God and if And if I just go to the better life next time I would have satisfied
Very good
I guess it's material material clinking me but
So you just follow in their footsteps and your desire will be fulfilled We are training them how to become purified and happy that is our mission to we want to see everyone happy Sarve Sukhino Bhavantu people do not know how to become happy they do not take the standard path to become happy They manufacture their own way that is their difficulty therefore Rishabh Dev gave this advice to his sons My dear boys just undergo austerity for transcendental realization everyone is performing austerity This boy I know he had to go to a foreign country to learn commercial management now he is well situated In this way everyone must undergo some austerity for future life so why not take that austerity for permanent happiness You have to purify your existence and your body as many times as you accept a material body you will have to change it But as soon as you get a spiritual body there is no question of change you already have a spiritual body Now due to our material contamination we are developing the material body but if you associate with spiritual life Then you shall develop a spiritual body the same example I have several times given is that if you put an iron rod within fire It will become like fire is it not
Put the iron rod into fire
Yes and it will become like fire
Yes
Although iron
Yes
Similarly if you always keep yourself spiritually engaged your body will act spiritually although it is material The same example when iron rod is red hot touch it anywhere and it will burn it takes on the quality of fire Similarly if you keep yourself in Krishna consciousness then you will become spiritualized you will act spiritually No more material demands
How do I do this
This process they are doing it you've seen these boys our six boys who have been initiated today this is very simple You have to follow the four relative restrictive regulations and chant these beats very easy
Well but see when I am back to be have the following my lifestyle that if I If I follow all these regulatory principle some might follow now but not at all
Some means
Some
There are only four regulated principles some means three or two
Two or three
So why not the other one
No no I mean the follow one or two one or two I follow now
Why not the other three what is the difficulty which one do you follow
Which one I do follow well I'm almost vegetarian but I eat eggs
Then that is also not complete
No not even complete since last time November I have become vegetarian but
Vegetarian is no qualification
Not much
The pigeon is vegetarian the monkey is vegetarian the most rubbish creature
Well
The monkey is vegetarian this naked sanyasi lives in the forest the most mischievous
I I felt that it was a little bit little bit of progress because I was somewhat difficult at first then easy And I had written to
No you can stick to all the regulated principles provided you take to the Krishna consciousness process Otherwise it is not possible
Yes this is it I have when I am back in Bihar and and Um my friends may say we are sitting in the evening and there is some nothing to do but fight mosquitoes And they say how about smoking some Ma Ma Mari Marijuna And I say sure there is nothing else to do and then I sit down and I enjoy myself for the evening Now we did this we got carried away we were doing it every day and realizing we were hurting ourselves and stop But still on occasion we
You have to live with us then your friends will not ask you what about Marijuna Keep the association of devotees you are opening centers to give people a chance to associate with us Why have you taken so much land in Mayapur those who are seriously desirous they will come and live with us Association is very influential if you associate with drunkards you become drunk if you associate with sadhus then you become a sadhu
He can he can come and stay with you in Bombay
Yes you can stay with us in Bombay but he wants friends with Marijuna that is the difficulty
Let me ask you about something else then maybe I will come back to this I find that I think I think of myself too much And this way I cannot think of God so much I think of myself is too many places how can I forget about myself So I can concentrate on other more important things
As they the devotees have done
You are saying to me that my path I think that you are saying is that my path is
My path to purity
To purity is to become a devotee
You hesitate
Well I
Is it very difficult to become a devotee
For myself it is I I don't feel so much the desire first the devotee tell me That they have given that they have given of material life these four regulatory principle they have explained to me Me giving up the material life and then I see and in places of and in places of this they have
What do you mean by material life I am sitting on this bed is it material or spiritual
Material
Then how we are giving up then have we given up material life
I think how I interpreted it was a desire for our material gains
What is material
Working towards the material gains and not giving up all the materials
Material life means when you desire to gratify your senses that is material life And when you desire to serve God that is spiritual life that is a difference between material life and spiritual life Now we are trying to serve our senses but instead of serving the senses when we serve God that is spiritual life What is the difference between our activities and others activities we are using everything table chair bed tape recorder Typewriter so what is the difference the difference is that we are using everything for Krishna
That it has gone the the devotees have said that the sensual the sensual sensual pleasure They have given up or replaced with the spiritual kinds of pleasures but see I have not felt this
Spiritual pleasures come when you desire to please Krishna that is spiritual pleasure for example A mother is more pleased by feeding her son she is not eating but when she sees that her son is eating very nicely Then she becomes pleased
Hmm spiritual pressure then is pleasing God
Spiritual pleasure means the pleasure of Krishna
Pleasing Krishna
Yes material pleasure means the pleasure of the senses that's all that is the difference When you simply try to please Krishna that is spiritual pleasure
I have viewed this as my thoughts of pleasing God was to do was to
Don't manufacture your ways of pleasing God don't manufacture suppose I want to please you then I shall ask you How can I serve you not that I manufacture some service that is not pleasing suppose I want a glass of water If you concoct the idea Swamiji will be more pleased if I give him a glass of milk hot milk that will not please me If you want to please me then you should ask me how can I please you and if you do what I order that will please me
And pleasing Krishna then is pleasing the devotee of Krishna
A devotee is one who is always pleasing Krishna he has no other business that is a devotee
Can you tell me somewhere about chanting Hare Krishna I have for quite some time chanted but never regularly Just a little bit here and there I just got beat very recently and once in while I feel comfortable chanting And once in a while not comfortable at all maybe I don't chant properly I don't know
Yes everything has a process you have to adopt the process
The devotee tell me that ecstasy that feel when chanting
Yes the more you become purified the more you will feel ecstasy this chanting process is the Purifying process so very beautifully there is one conversation in Prabhupada Dilamrata Wherein one one devotee is actually asking Prabhupada Prabhupada when I am chanting Hare Krishna I am thinking of You know is that a light actually comes in front of my mind and then Prabhupada said you continue chanting all the lights will go away So yeah Prabhupada is saying right we are not looking at immediate magic tricks you know some light is coming or You know some kind of thought is coming to my mind etc what is it it is a process it is a very tested process Because people's life have got completely transformed by the process of chanting Hare Krishna So this process is from going from bhoga vriti that is from sense gratification to the process of serving the senses of the Supreme Lord So entirely thing if you see the Bob Kohan's questions are all about I don't feel comfortable chanting Sometimes I am able to chant sometimes I don't like to chant etc so here we see That as long as we keep what I want in the center of what we want to do then always we will be frustrated Because many things the mind is playing on us sometimes you want to chant sometimes devotional service is ecstatic sometimes devotional service is not at all Palatable because we want to do something else so as long as we are listening to our mind we cannot get sustained pleasure in Krishna consciousness But the moment we whether I like it or not I have to wake up during Brahman Murtha because Not that it is pleasing me or is displeasing me but because it pleases the Lord right it pleases guru and Gauranga that is why I get up early in the morning Whether or not I like to chant I have to chant minimum sixteen rounds of Hare Krishna Mahamitra tomorrow's Ekadashi the most auspicious Day of Ekadashi which is the which is the most dear day to Lord Shri Krishna so whether or not I like it What I will do I will be chanting at least I will be taking a sankalpa in the morning most of you are part of that Japa sankalpa group where we will be taking additional sankalpa that means to chant extra number of rounds For the pleasure of guru and Gauranga some people chant twenty-five rounds some people chant thirty-two rounds sixty-four one twenty-eight I know devotees who chant Hundred and ninety-two rounds on Ekadishis right so if we want to advance in spiritual life The motto should be not what gives me pleasure but the motto should be what gives pleasure To the Supreme Personality of Godhead Lord Shri Krishna so that's what it is alright so let's move on to chapter number Six this chapter is entitled The Perfect Devotee this is a conversation again between Shamasundar Prabhu and Shilpa Prabhupada so going to discuss about austerity right Tomorrow we are going to practice additional austerity because tomorrow is the most auspicious occasion of Pashankusha Ekadashi so we want to practice more austerities we don't want to practice austerities according to our whims and fancies not to satisfy Our own whims like the politicians also do fasting isn't it they will go and sit in the maidan and say that I'm not going to drink water I'm not going to eat food But this is the ABC these are the conditions I want the government to meet something like that right Or a worker may go on strike saying I want more salary I want a holiday I want leave etc right but we are not practicing austerity to 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 fulfill our sense gratificatory tendencies right we are following austerity what is prescribed in the shastras it is mentioned in the shastras That these auspicious days like Ekadashi Krishna Janmahashtami Gaurapurnima Ramanami Naraschinkachaturdashi The Kartikmasu also coming up in on twenty-ninth of October right all of these are opportunities for us to advance in devotional service By practicing additional austerities not for sense gratification but for the pleasure of the Lord and when we do that We are able to control our mind more and more like his own is Radhanaswamy Maharaj Gives example of a good dog and a bad dog we've discussed this in the previous sessions also right a good dog and a bad dog the more we feed the good dog Which means I have to wake up in the manga I have to wake up during Brahman Murtha to chant Hare Krishna and then what is about what is a bad dog in my mind say Oh ek din jada so gaya to kya kar sakta hai it's okay does not matter right tomorrow alone I will sleep till six o'clock After that I will do my chanting right but the right but the good dog is barking saying that no it is good to chant during Brahman Murtha time get up at four o'clock Go and take bath come and do chanting so whichever dog we feed will become more strong Today I decide okay okay to Monday is okay then I will I'll just wake up at six o'clock right and then the next day this bad dog is becoming more powerful But then when I decide no I am going to chant Hare Krishna by waking up at four o'clock I will cleanse myself and start chanting during the Brahman Murtha time Then the next day this 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 good dog becomes a stronger dog right the dog that we feed more and more That dog will become stronger and then we will be able to choose the good dog more easily and efficiently if you are choosing that good dog Always right it's it's a question of free will and we make the choices every day every time right suddenly we go out there is pani puri Right we want to eat the pani puri the bad dog tells us oh I want to eat the pani puri now right but the good dog tells us no it is not prasadam Right whatever is required let's go home let us offer to Krishna and then have right so in this way whichever dog we feed if you just go ahead and have it Then our bad dog is gaining an upper hand but when we choose oh I will not have anything other than Krishna prasadam right Let me go home and then prepare something offer to Krishna and then have it then what happens we are feeding the strong the good dog So the good dog becomes stronger and stronger so we have to feed the good dog so much right stronger and stronger that it becomes so strong That the bad dog almost dies down that is what happens to pure devotees right pure devotees That this practicing of chanting during Brahman Murtha this A B C D square in the association of devotees Bhagavatam Chanting etc it is so pleasurable for them because it has become a way of life for them but for us it is a struggle Why because we have not created that interest for chanting in our life but the more we practice chanting Hare Krishna It will become a way of life for us also just like not eating onion garlic or not having coffee tea etc has become a way of life for now Similarly chanting Hare Krishna during Brahman Murtha getting pleasure and hearing about my hearing from Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam Chaitanya Charitamrata Will become a way of life for us that is so pleasurable that we don't want to do any of these mundane things So that is the goal right so let's go ahead this chapter is going to talk about austerities and it's very very much coinciding with our Tomorrow's Ekadashi hmm so what is Prabhupada telling here we have to practice austerities voluntarily for a higher pleasure paramdrishtva Nivartate right we are not seeing ninety 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 I don't want to do this I can't do that I can't do that no we are going to replace Our mundane interests if you like to sing we sing for Krishna if you like to dance we dance for Krishna If we like to cook we cook palatable foodstuffs for the Lord offer it to the Lord and have Krishna prasadam so it is not an austerity at all right What what is what is it that we call as an austerity and austerity is we are we are telling our mind to add according to what we tell them So it is an austerity for to get our mind under control right that's why Krishna also tells in Bhagavad Gita for one who has a controlled mind The mind is the greatest friend but for one whose mind is uncontrolled the mind itself is the greatest enemy like that alright so let's move forward Okay so this is chapter number six entitled Pure The Perfect Devotee okay so who would like to read Okay Rishabano Kanya Madhaji you can be Shamsundar Prabhu and Lil Nandini Madhaji you can be Prabhupada go ahead
Hare Krishna Madhaji Dandvatra Nam Shamsundara Okay What is my character Madhaji
Uh yeah you are Shamsundar Prabhu only go ahead Shilpa Prabhupada
Okay Shrilpa Prabhupada this afternoon we were discussing austerities
Ma'am
Uh if we don't practice austerities voluntarily then we must involuntarily practice some austerities
Yes under the direction of the spiritual master one should you have no mind to follow austerities but when you accept a spiritual master You have to carry out his order that is austerity
Even if you don't want to practice austerity you must
Yes you must because you have surrendered unto your spiritual master his order is final so even if you don't like it You have to do it to please me
Oh
But you don't like Nobody likes to fast but the spiritual master says today fasting so what can be done A disciple is one who has voluntarily agreed to be disciplined by the spiritual master that is austerity
Say like our parents or many people in the material world completely in a in a Inamort inamort by the material life they don't want to undergo austerity or bodily pain but still they must They are being forced by nature to suffer austerities
That is forced austerity that is not good voluntary austerity will help
If you don't undergo voluntarily If you don't undergo voluntarily austerity, then you must be forced to undergo austerity.
That is the difference between man and animal. An animal cannot accept austerity, but a man can accept it. There is a nice foodstuff in the confectioner's shop, so a man wants to eat it. But he sees that he has no money, so he can restrain himself. But when a cow comes, immediately she pushes her mouth in. You can beat her with a stick, but she will tolerate it. She will do that. Therefore, an animal cannot, therefore, an animal cannot undergo austerity. Our austerity is very nice. We chant Krishna, dance, and Krishna sends very nice footsteps and we eat. That's all. Why are your people not agreeable to such austerity, chanting, dancing and eating nicely?
Mathaji, your voice is not.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I was on mute. Okay, so here, very beautifully, Prabhupada is explaining here, that actually what we are doing is not at all austerity, right? Is eating palatable foodstuffs, very tasty foodstuffs and austerity, no, we already like doing that, right? But what we have to do, we have to only dovetail our interests in the service of the supreme personality of Godhead. So Prabhupada is saying, the difference between man and animal, right? Right? Eating, sleeping, mating and defending animal also can do and human beings also can do. But however, one who can exercise the restraint, right? Exercise the restraint means one who can control one's mind and not just go like an animal, whatever I want to do, whatever my mind tells me, if I just go and do it. Then I am no different from an animal. But when I exercise my intelligence, how can I exercise my intelligence? When by the study of scriptures, I know what is right, what is wrong. When I develop the discrimination, right? This is right, I will do it. This is wrong, I will not do it. Then we will be able to tolerate the urges of the mind and of the senses and we will do what is right, right? On Ekadashi day, if you have to fast from grains and beans, we will do that. On Ekadashi days, if it is good to chant twenty-five rounds, yes, we will do that, right? We will do what is good for us, right, in the long term and not just what is palatable to the senses at the right now, right? Like that is the thing, okay? So now who will read? Karpa Kavali Mathaji can be Shamsundar Prabhu and Lillanandini Mathaji, you can be Prabhupada, yeah. Let me share my screen again, Hare Krishna, yes.
Because we are following austerities, Krishna senses. I have to read now, Mathaji, now. Bob is.
Yeah, no, Mathaji, you are done now. We'll have two other devotees who will be reading. So whom did I, did I not unmute once again?
My, myself, Mathaji.
Yeah, Karpa Kavali Mathaji, you be, uh, Shamsundar Prabhu. And Lillanandini Mathaji, you are there? Oh, Lillanandini Mathaji, you only read. Okay, Naukishori Mathaji, you be, oh, you also read. Okay, Sindhu Mathaji, you be Prabhupada, okay, go ahead.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji.
Yes, go ahead. No, no, Naukishori Mathaji, you already read or you have not read?
Am I audible?
No, Mathaji, I didn't read.
Okay, Mathaji, you'll read next. Now let Karpa Kavali Mathaji and Sindhu Mathaji can go ahead, yes.
Yes, Mathaji. Hari Bhol, Mathaji, because we are following. I'm audible, right?
Yes.
Because we are following austerities, Krishna sends us nice things, so we are not losers. When you become Krishna, Krishnaized, then you get more comfort. Krishnaized, okay. Krishnaized, then you get more comforts than at the present moment. That's a fact. I have been living alone for the last twenty years, but I have no difficulties. Before taking sanyasa, I was living in Delhi, so I had no difficulties, although I was living alone.
Karpa Kavali Mathaji. Okay, Naukishori Mathaji, go ahead. Okay, Karpa Kavali Mathaji, can you unmute yourself?
Yes, Mathaji, yes, Mathaji, now I was unable to unmute. If you don't accept spiritual discipline, then nature will force you many calamities.
Oh, yes, that is stated in the Bhagavad Gita. Daivih esha gunamahi mama maya duratyaya. Maam evay prapadyante mayam etam tarantite, BG seven point fourteen. This divine energy of mind consisting of the three modes of material nature is difficult to overcome. But those who have surrendered unto me can easily cross beyond it. Maya is imposing so many difficulties, but as soon as you surrender to Krishna, no more imposition.
BG is Bhagavad Gita, yeah, Shamsundar Prabhu, go ahead.
We are so foolish and we are always thinking, in the future, I will be happy.
Yes, that is Maya illusion. That is like the ass. You sit down on the back of the ass and just take a morsel of grass. Ass is thinking, let me go forward a little and I shall get the grass. Bob laughs, but it's always one foot distant. That is assism. They all laugh. Everyone is thinking, let me go a little forward and I will get it. I will be very happy.
But I, I thank you so much for. Tomorrow I'll have to leave you and.
Don't talk leave, but talk live.
I cannot yet, but I was thinking how now of returning tomorrow to my town, but.
Don't return?
I should stay here tomorrow, here.
Stay here?
You tell me to, I will stay, I will stay.
Yes, you are a very good boy. That is a long pause. It is now much quieter. It is very simple. When the living entities forget Krishna, they are in this material world. Krishna means his name, his form, his abode, his pastimes, everything.
What was it last?
Huh? Pastimes?
Pastimes.
Okay, Hare Krishna. So thank you, Mathajis. So here we can see. That means Lord Krishna's qualities, pastimes, etcetera cannot be understood simply by our endeavor to chant either Hare Krishna. Or to, or to do any kind of austerity. When we do all these austerities, we think, oh, Krishna should reveal himself. I am doing so much, I am chanting sixteen rounds. Why is Krishna not revealing himself? That is Hiranyakshipo mentality, right? Hiranyakshipo, he will not do anything, but he was asking Pralagasi there, here, I want to see him. I don't want to believe a god whom I cannot see with my eyes, but rather we should make a qualify ourselves in such a way. That when we render service to Krishna in such a way that Krishna is so much pleased with us, that Krishna will reveal himself automatically. Not that we demand that Krishna, if you exist, you show yourself to me, then only I will believe you, right? Krishna is under no obligation. Prabhupada says Krishna is nobody, Krishna is not your father's servant, that you call and he will come, right? But you, but we qualify ourselves in such a way by rendering service to the Lord, by rendering services to Guru and Goranga. In such a way that the Lord will reveal himself to us like that. So here we see that Prabhupada is pleased with Mr. Bob Kohan. He's saying, you are a very good boy, right? And I will teach you how you can remember the Lord's name, form, abode and pastimes like that. And then he is still asking, what is this, pastimes? Yeah, pastimes, right? And then Prabhupada is going to explain how when a king is there, various activities of the king. Like sometimes he is administering in the palace, sometimes he is going for hunting, etcetera. So all of those activities are to be known if you want to know the king. Similarly, Krishna does so many things. Krishna has so many pastimes with Mother Yashoda, where Krishna is having dust and Yashoda, Yashoda Rani is asking Krishna to open his mouth. And then, you know, to check if I have eaten mud and then he is saying, oh, I have not eaten mud. Right? All of those leelas, leelas with the gopis, leelas with the gopas, when he is going to graze the cows. That time he is playing with his sakas, right? And they play so many games, they kill so many demons, so like that, various pastimes are going on. So in this way, when we have to understand all of the pastimes of the Lord, the nama, the rupa, the form of the Lord, the beautiful Shamsundara form that Krishna takes. Various avatars of the Lord, where he comes as Matsyakurma Varaha, Narasimha, Vamanaparashuram, all of this is detailed in Bhagavatam. So when we have to understand the nama, rupa, guna, leela of the Lord, then what we have to do? We have to submissively hear from a spiritual master and render service to the spiritual master. So that is the formula. So that is what is given here. So let's go ahead. Okay, Naukishori Mathaji, you be Bob and I'll be Prabhupada, go ahead. Pastimes from there.
Hare Krishna, Mathaji, screen. Sorry.
Oh, I know, okay, okay, yeah, sorry.
Yes, Mathaji.
Yes, okay. When was that last? What was that last from there?
Yes, Mathaji. Hare Krishna, Mathaji, Dhankavatana, thank you. What was that last?
Ah, pastimes?
Pastime?
When we speak of a king, it means a king's government, king's palace, king's queen, king's sons, secretaries, military strength, everything.
Yes.
Similarly, Krishna being the supreme personality of Godhead, as soon as we think of Krishna, this means all the energies of Krishna. That is complete by saying Radha Krishna. Radha represents all the energy of Krishna and Krishna is the supreme lord. So when we speak of Krishna, the living entities are also included because the living entities are energies, different energies of Krishna, superior energy. So when this energy is not serving the energetic, that is material existence. The whole world is not serving Krishna, yet serving Krishna in a indirect way, different way. They are serving indirectly just as disobedient citizens serve the government indirectly. Prisoners come to the prison house on account of their disobedience of the laws of the state. So in the prison house, we are forced to obey the laws of the state. Similarly, all the living entities here are godless, either by ignorance or by choice. You do not like to accept the supremacy of God, so we are trying to bring them to their original condition, that is the Krishna consciousness movement.
I would like to ask you sir, just something, I talked with devotees about medicine. I walked to the river with some devotees today. I have a cold, so I said I shouldn't go in the water. Some felt I should because it is the genjes and some said I shouldn't because I have a cold. Anyway, we were talking and I don't understand, do we get sick because of our bad actions in the past?
Yes, that's a fact.
But when one.
Any kind of distress we suffer is due to our impious activities in the past.
But when someone is removed from.
Karma influence.
Karma influence.
Yes.
Does he still get sick?
No, even if he gets sick, that is very temporary. Since if this fan is moving, if you disconnect the electric power, it will move for a moment. That movement is not due to electric current, that is force. What is it called physically, this force?
Momentum.
Momentum, but as soon as it stops, oh, more movement. Similarly, even if a devotee was surrendered to Krishna, is suffering from material consequences, that is the duty. A devotee does not take any material miseries as miseries, he takes them as Krishnas, gods of mercy.
A perfect soul, a devotee, a pure devotee.
Hare Krishna. So we'll end here, six fifteen. So here, the important thing what is mentioned here is. Even all of the sufferings that we are getting is because of our impious activities that we have done in the past. We are supposed to get much, much higher, bad sinful reactions for our activities. But Krishna is so merciful and Krishna has given us only a token of, the token of the difficulty or the suffering that we must actually get. Because of our past karmas. And Prabhupada gives a very beautiful example of the fan here, right? Although just with the, when we switch off the fan, it immediately does not stop. It rotates, rotates, rotates for some time and then it stops. Similarly, we are so conditioned by our lusts, anger, greed, pride and the illusion. And even after chanting Hare Krishna Mahamantra, even after hearing Bhagavad Gita, Bhagavatam, even after understanding what are the qualities of a devotee? That we have to adopt, right? That we know all the knowledge, but what happens? Because of our conditioning, we are not able to give it up and take up the right path. But however Krishna tells in Bhagavad Gita, what is that? Right? Even if somebody is very, very fallen, shipram means very quickly such a person will attain the state of transcending himself from the sinful activities. Right? So we only need to become, to take an endeavor to become a devotee and then Krishna will purify us, right? We are not depending on our own endeavor, but we are chanting Hare Krishna, following instructions of Guru and Goranga. And in this way, the Lord will reveal himself to us. And when the Lord reveals himself to us, then Krishna surya sama maya hai antakar. Then Krishna reveals himself to us, then Maya cannot be anywhere in the vicinity of Krishna. So that is our only, we will continue our reading tomorrow evening, six o'clock. And let's quickly see who all we have today and then we'll do Harinam Sangirtan for a couple of minutes and then we'll end our session. Okay, I can see Karpa Kavali Mathaji, Lillanandini Mathaji, Vijalekshmi Priya Mathaji, then Naukishori Mathaji. Who else? We have Ranganathan Prabhu, Sindhu Mathaji. Okay, so like the demigods will give us their darshan like that. All the faces are popping up. Thank you for your darshan. Thank you very much. So we'll meet tomorrow morning, five o'clock for the Brahman Murtha chanting session. And then again, we will meet at six P M for Shilpa Prabhupada book study, yeah? So anyone has any comments, any queries, we can take that now, otherwise we'll end the session now. Naukishori Mathaji, lot of effulgence, Brahman effulgence is coming from your, this, from the window. Maybe the room is dark, that's why.
No, Mathaji, it's here, three o'clock, so it's very hot outside. I will close the blind. Yes, Mathaji. I will close the blind.
Oh, Hari Bhol, thank you so much for joining, Mathaji. I mean, it's too much austerity. Tomorrow is Ekadashi or today is Ekadashi?
No, tomorrow, tomorrow, Mathaji. I'm from South Africa.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. So quickly we will do Harinam Sangirtan and then we will end. Namah Om Vishnu Padhaya Krishna Prishaya Hutale. Shrimate Bhaktire Nanda. Swami Nidhi Naame. Namaste Sarasvati Deve. Gauravani Prachari Ne. Patshatya Desha Dhaadi Ne Jayya Sri Krishna Jayatanaya. Prabhu Nitya Nanda. Shri Atvaita. Gada Dharashri Vasari. Gauravakta Vrinda. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare, Hare Rama. Hare Rama, Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna. Krishna Krishna, Hare Hare. Hare Rama, Hare Rama. Rama Rama, Hare Hare. Jayagaurani Jai, Jayagaurani Jai. Gaurani Jai, Jayagaurani Jai, Jayya Jagannath, Jayya Balade. Jayya Subhadra, Jayya, Jayya Subhadra. Jayya Balagopal Jaya, Balagopal Jaya, Balagopal Jaya, Balagopal Jaya. Prahladar Singh Jaya, Prahladar Singh Jaya, Prahladar Singh Jaya, Prahladar Singh Jaya. Lakshmi Nar Singh Jaya, Lakshmi Nar Singh. Lakshmi Nar Singh Jaya, Lakshmi Nar Singh Jaya. Jayya Prabhupada, Prabhupada. Bhudhude, Bhudhude. Nitaay, Gaurahari Bhol, Gaurahari Bhol. Gaurahari Bhol, Gaurahari Bhol. Shilpa Gurus, Shilpa Prabhupada, Shilpa Gurudeva Ki Jay. Kaligupitapavna, Hare Krishna Mahamantra Ki Jay, Harinam Sangirtan Ki Jay, All Lordies Assemble Devotees. Hare Krishna, All Lordies Assemble Devotees, Hare Krishna, All Lordies Assemble Devotees. Hare Krishna, All Lordies, All Lordies, All Lordies, Sushishi Guru and Sri Goranga. Shilpa Prabhupada Ki Jay, Nidhai Gauravreemanaande, Hari Hari Bhol. Hare Krishna. So thank you very much. Meet you all tomorrow morning for the. Hare Krishna. So thank you very much. Meet you all tomorrow morning for the Brahman Murtha chanting session.